I'm sorry, that clock is still seven o'clock. I'll get Jim to change it tomorrow.
We're following back.
Okay.
So, I'll call this meeting to order, and Ms. Quinn can call the rule.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Rappa?
Present.
Commissioner Wykoff?
Present.
Commissioner Hearn?
Present.
Commissioner Klyet?
Present.
And First Vice Chair Beloski.
Present. Thank you, Quinn.
Yes.
And I met Jenny. Has everyone met Jenny? Was she here at the last meeting?
No, this is her first meeting.
Yes, it's my...I want to present Jenny Rowan. Jenny has come on as our Planning and Zoning Coordinator. So, when you get proposals in for zoning changes or PDs and all those quasi-judicial things, she'll be making presentations and carrying that process through. You remember that we just initiated a whole bunch of new processes for site plan review to give the community more input to the process. But that requires a whole lot more staff work as well, so Jenny's going to spearhead that for us. She's got a great planning background and was able to hit the ground running here and has also been instrumental in helping us get ready for the CRS FEMA five-year cycle review, which in our case is an eight-year cycle review. So, we've got a lot of work keeping her busy. We're really glad she came on.
It's nice to meet you, Jenny. Okay, next item on the agenda, please, is approval of the August minutes. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Oh, we have to...okay, roll call.
Yes. Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyet?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wykoff?
Yes.
And First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes. Perfect. Okay, on to new business. And if we could have Linda take over on this. Thank you.
There are several items on your agenda tonight. As you see, we didn't do anything for a while, and now I'm going to throw everything at you at once. The first is amendment to the floodplain ordinance. The ordinance has been in place for some time. As I said, we are about to undergo our CRS visit, so I took the opportunity to go through the ordinance to make sure it's up to date and more reflective of policy at FEMA level and the types of things we're expected to put in place to facilitate our best possible management of floodplain conditions. Some of this is mainly housekeeping. The old ordinance refers to the wrong positions or doesn't acknowledge process properly. For the most part, it really is housekeeping. One of the issues is the duties of the floodplain administrator that needed to be clarified. Who was the floodplain administrator? Also, there were a lot of changes in the section dealing with appeals and variances because the way it read before, the magistrate would hear those appeals and would act on them, but the magistrate isn't qualified to act on floodplain issues. Those require certification, and they're...at the moment, we only have one certified floodplain manager, but no matter how many we have, the magistrate can't order somebody to sign and seal things. So, even if they were to win an appeal, for some reason, we'd probably just have to be referred back to us for additional review instead of overturning any kind of floodplain management decision. So, I wanted to make it clear in there that they did not have the authority to force somebody to sign and seal anything. That's always the case, of course, with the building official or the engineers, but I wanted to make it clear also with the floodplain manager. Other things, there were some changes dealing with what was required for site plan development, what level of science has to be turned in to make appeals. For instance, the...as hopefully you all know, because we have been publicizing it, FEMA is about to amend the MATS. Some of those amendments will have significant impacts on the way we do business, what kind of things we permit and where they're permitted. And they allow you to appeal decisions on your designation on your property, maybe provide additional information over time to show that your floodplain levels have changed, things like that. But in order to do so, they only accept data that is at the same level of the science they use to make the determination to begin with. And I wanted to make that clear in here, that it's not something you can just send off a postcard to FEMA and say, "I object, and I want my floodplain, you know, and base flood elevations to be this." That you have to provide for a lot of even-level scientific analysis in order to achieve that. Also, on Section 94-50 about information for development in high-hazard areas, we specified that the zones that were being considered were included the Coastal A Zone, which is that new designation that's going on to the MATS. Before, our floodplain ordinance only referred to A and V zones, but the Coastal A designation will be really important to us as we move forward, and I wanted to make sure that was reflected in there. The...Al Carrier, our consulting engineer, had emailed today suggesting that Section 94-50, Parn One, be amended with some additional language, and I'd like to pass that out for you so that we can look it over together. All right, and as you can see before you, he suggested that under Number One, A, there'd be...we require a boundary survey that shows the improvements in topography and that's signed and sealed by a registered Florida professional surveyor showing the delineation of the flood hazard areas and flood zones and base flood elevations. And B, the delineation of flood zones. And I think that that's a good point, that when we have people bringing in site plans, we want to make sure that they have on their plans all of these things. We always end up making them go back and put it on. We might as well specify that it's on here. It helps us when our regulations are very concise and that they're at a higher standard than just general language. That helps us with our floodplain ratings, our classification. So, I would agree with him that those are good amendments to have in place with the rest of the amendments as proposed. I know this is a pretty lengthy document. We had provided all the strikeout and underline, and I think I've covered generally the intent of the changes.
So, Linda, your suggestion, or from Mr. Carrier, is that we add, under Paragraph One, an A and a B? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And then where we have A, boundary survey showing improvements, topography signed and sealed by a registered Florida surveyor showing delineation of flood hazard, and then are the one below where it's Number One, that would turn into B? Is that correct? Is that how we're going to numberate that?
Yeah, and actually, I think both of those would go behind. Number One is A's, an A and a B.
Okay.
At any rate, I...we'll figure out how best to put it in the outline as long as you're comfortable with the requirement that those items be placed on the site plans.
So, this would then show within the boundaries on the survey which areas... because I know I see this all the time. Sometimes part of a property is within a flood zone, part of it's not, or there are different categories, even within the same site.
Correct. That's more of a case here...
So, that's the whole purpose of this, is so we can designate where they are?
Right.
So, the building, the construction standards would be different, whether they're in C-A-Z versus just the A?
Yes. Sometimes you get just the back corner of a building and a V, which makes the whole building V, but, you know, so if you can keep your building out of V, it may still be regulated as V. It's my guess, because Vs are usually also Coastal As, and they will be regulated the same. But it's important for us to note on the site plan where all of those are.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, on our agenda, then, we have an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach amending City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, Flood Plane Management. I won't take the time to read all that, but if we could have a motion with that approval and the additional two areas which Linda passed out on the enclosed sheets, if we could have an emotion for approval.
Okay, here goes. I make a motion that we approve the ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach amending City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, Flood Plane Management, as presented by the city with the amendment as proposed by Mr. Carrier relative to Section 94-50.
And do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Quinn, if you want to call the rule.
I think it would be worth just stating on the record, for those who will only read this later, that we open for public hearing, the fact there's no one here but us, just so on the record.
Yeah.
You state that you're opening for public hearing and then closing.
For each of these, you would like us to do this?
Yes.
Each of these? Yes.
Okay, now, we will open up the floor for public hearing. Okay, we'll close that since no one is present.
Okay.
Well played.
Okay.
All right, Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyet?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
And First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes. The motion passes. All right, on to B. An ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach amending City Code of Ordinances, Section 14 through 213. If a planning director would like to speak on this to us.
Yes, thank you, ma'am and mayor...mayor, commissioner, chair.
Don't wish that on them.
That was a big promotional...
Right.
Yeah, this is a proposal that the staff is making to resolve what's potentially a floodplain management issue. In some places, people are beginning to get permits to extend their seawalls up very high and then attempt to fill their lot in, which leaves a big ridge, even a cliff, between them and their neighbor. And it also creates a considerable runoff problem to the neighbor's properties, both when the water is coming in. If it does not come in on these higher seawalls, it will go around and create scouring on the neighbor's property. And then as it's receding back into the bay, again, if it hits that wall and can't get out, it washes off sideways and again causes erosion on the neighbor's property. This is definitely not in keeping with FEMA standards. The point in living out here, whether we realize it or not, is that water comes and goes. And the plan for having vents in buildings and no obstructions is that when the water comes in, we survive it, and then the water goes back out and we let it go. Creating impediments actually changes the topography and the way that the water acts on other properties around us. So, what we're proposing is to put back in code something that seems to have disappeared over time recently, that when you bring in a new seawall or make improvements, you could only raise your seawall 12 inches higher than the neighbor's seawall. And that it, at any rate, should not extend higher than the crown of the road in front of the property. That way, any water that's coming in off of the...off of the road and trying to get back out in the bay is able to do that. It's all pretty much level. Raising the seawall won't keep the ocean out on one property. Even if we put the seawalls up all the way around the islands, it'd still back up through the sewer, and then it wouldn't be able to get back out properly with drainage and things getting clogged up. So, it's better for us to go ahead and specify in code that we are limiting the height of seawall.
I have a question for you, though, related to this, when we're starting to talk about now, getting the permits for the seawalls and things. Does this put the onus on the property owner, then, during the permitting process, to have to get a survey that includes an elevation certificate as to the crown height of the road out in front of the property, or is that a known?
They have to bring a survey, and usually with the seawall, if they're only going 12 inches, then we will approve it.
Okay.
Anyway, and at this point, we don't have seawalls, which at 12 inches higher would pass the crown of the road.
Okay, so the...
But yes, in the end, if that is a question, then it would be up to them to show what their elevation is on the crown of the road.
Okay. I noticed in here, too, on your summary where it says proposed amendment, the first, Section 14-213, the second paragraph, "All seawall are bulk hits on Boca Seaga Bay, John's Pass, east of John's Pass Bridge, shall be reinforced concrete construction, with the exception of concrete block seawalls that can be repaired." So, the reinforced concrete, that includes, I'm assuming, the corrugated vinyl panels and that sort of thing?
Yes, they usually put concrete behind those.
Okay, yeah, no, I know they backfill them. I just didn't know if that was still considered reinforced concrete?
Yes.
Or if the only material was going to be allowed to be, you know, pre-stressed concrete panels?
No, we have been allowing the vinyl.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. We are looking at Letter B. Amending ordinance, Section 14-213, location on Boca Sierra Bay and John's Pass, east of St. John's Pass Bridge. Construction specifications generally. Do we have a...can someone make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I do have one more question. So, we're starting to see some of the seawalls that were already replaced that may or may not be a little higher than the previous height. So, if we're going on the second go-around, oops, is there anything that stops us, other than the crown of the road issue, from stair-stepping that to continue?
No, that's why we put the crown of the road in.
That's the stopgap, right?
Yeah.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone here who wishes in the audience to speak to this issue? Okay, the public hearing is closed on this ordinance since no one is present. Okay, Quinn?
Okay, Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyet?
Yes.
And First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes, thank you. Next, Letter C. An ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach amending City Code of Ordinances, Sections 110 through 428, same yard of corner lot. I turn this over to our planning director.
Yes, thank you, ma'am and chair. Our code currently states that if you have a corner lot, you have to set back two front yard setback dimensions on it so that both streets are set back as if they're front yards, which means you're setting back 20 feet on each, on two sides. And this is very problematic. Most of the lots in town are only 40 feet wide, like 80% of our lots are only 40 feet wide. So, there's nothing left. It's very difficult. And they had tried to...the purpose was to try to get a unified line along any street, but realistically, we were never developed that way. There's...we've got houses all over the place, and that kind of code was kind of... they tried to take this very rigid subdivision code and overlay it on the city after the city was already built. So, and that would be relevant in a place where maybe you were trying to put sidewalks... So, and that would be relevant in a place where maybe you were trying to put sidewalks and a big setback from the road and curb and gutter system. We don't have all that out here. So what's happened though is it's made a lot of lots just unbuildable. You'll notice when you look at the map that where we have vacant lots, it's off in a corner because we haven't been able to get around it. They went through the trouble, as you can see in the strikeout section, of specifying that if this situation prevented you from building a house at least 25 feet width, that you would be allowed to build that 25-foot width house or... That's just a whole lot to go through. Instead of saying, "We have a 10-foot setback on the side," which is how most cities do it. So I'm recommending that we go with the simpler version and just set back 10 feet for the sides and do away with all of the extra gymnastics we have to go through for the use of those lots. It seems more appropriate, given the development pattern of the city and the size of the lots.
So the landowner gets to pick which side they call the front, which one they call the side? One of them's 25 feet and the other one's 10?
Most of them have a front yard, but if it's a vacant lot, they can decide which one they want to use, yes.
That's a very good thing. Okay. Letter C. Do we have a motion from the planning commission for approval?
I make a motion that we accept this Section 110-428.
I second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, let us open the floor for discussion for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this issue. The public hearing is closed since there is no one who wishes to speak to this issue. Ms. Guine?
Yes, Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyat?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
And First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes. Okay, and our last good housekeeping item is Letter D. An ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach amending city code of ordinances, Section 110 through 386, purpose of planned development, PD districts.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this item actually comes to you as a kind of informal referral from the city commission, who has been concerned about the way PDs have been used here in the city to basically bypass development standards. Now, in all fairness, this has fallen over, the reason that occurs is because, as you know, having looked a little bit at our code, it's not really usable. We have densities and intensities that are allowed all over town by land use, right? But the zoning overlay is so restrictive to height and the use of the property in terms of setbacks, that it's impossible to get anywhere close to those standards of density or intensity. We really shouldn't have a code that does that. And so the result is that anybody who wants to build anything creative or get anywhere close to the density and intensity the land use promises them, have to bring in a planned development and have regulations designed specifically for that site. Now, a lot of places allow for PDs. They do so with the intent that a planned development would come in offering something unique that the city really needed, and the city would offer in exchange for getting that extra bit of regulation and extra creative development, they would work with them on ordinances that were designed for that site, that accomplished what the city generally wants to do in its zoning, but with a little more flexibility. Typically, these planned development ordinances have a minimum site area, because it's hard to get creative on a teeny tiny little lot. And you don't want it to be so small that it appears to be nothing but a spot zoning used to avoid your land development code. In this city, we have no restriction on site or use or function. And over the years, people have come in and proposed PDs, and the city really hasn't asked much in return in exchange for that privilege. It hasn't gotten the kind of design necessarily that they, that you would hope for. But again, in a small site, there's only so much design you can do. So the commission's been concerned about this. When you go to the polls tomorrow, there will be one of the charter amendment items that requires planned developments or special area plans to be approved only by a supermajority of the commission. And that's pretty rigid. It's going to be hard for almost anybody to meet that standard and, you know, in years where the commission is not all agreeable with each other. And so that's going to be a bit restrictive. In addition, it doesn't really address the more critical issue of what do you do with the PD and how does it function?
Yes.
It still keeps it a completely political decision instead of a planning, more technical performance decision. What I'd like to do, and I think that I understand the community saying they would like to do, is to have more of a performance standard. You know, when you're flexing, you want to talk about how the development interacts with the area around it, the properties around it. What effect does it have on the area? How does it fit in with the overall plan that you want for the city? Those are the things you need to be thinking about when you're trying to do a new zoning, not specifically whether it's a popular political decision at the moment. So before we come back with a full review of the comp plan that hopefully will do away with the need for constant PDs by providing a better standard all over, I'm responding to the, or we are, you are, responding to the city commission's suggestion that there should be other restrictions on the PD, whether the ones that's being voted on tomorrow passes or not, there, these are still some issues that I think you would want to deal with. Now, because our lots are so small here, instead of this, you know, another standard of maybe three or five or 10 acres for a PD in a big place, I'm suggesting that a half acre is necessary. We don't, you know, as I said, we have tiny little lots, you'd still have to put quite a few of them together for a half acre. But that's big enough here that you maybe could do something different with setbacks and different kinds of uses and approaches on the site, maybe just to get a little more creativity, to have enough space to work. And then I'm also suggesting that... Let's see if I can find it here. Oh, or I didn't put it in. Oops, this says... We're missing some. It was also my intent to, and I apologize, it's maybe just not underlined, but I will check on that. My other intent was to specify that there be a performance standard that planned developments should be mixed use. We don't really need a planned development that just does one thing, because zoning could do that. The city, I'm suggesting, needs to specify, if you're going to do a planned development, it really needs to be unique and figure out how to put more than one use together and create more diversity within the area that you're planning. For instance, getting a little retail in with your residential help support. There are still some areas in town we'd be able to do that. Good portions of the roads way right along Gulf Boulevard is usually where the PDs go. It would be much better for the town if, instead of driving through and seeing all parking on the ground, that people who had the zoning appropriate with FEMA would put some retail on the ground, you know, so you had shops and restaurants and things associated with the hotels, but also that gave something for the locals to use and to interact, just instead of all parking on the ground all the way through town. And we're trying to create more of a multimodal, comfortable place to be, pulling the development up a little closer to the road and hiding the parking underneath or behind some retail would make it a more interesting, more economically functional place. It would be more sustainable economically. So I was, my suggestion was that we add the standard that PDs be mixed use as well. And I thought I put that in here, but it doesn't seem to have made it. So if you agree with me, I'd be glad for you to discuss that and add it into the amendment.
So, I'm sorry. Can we, let's have a motion then? Can I have a motion?
I just have a question, a minute of discussion, if you don't mind.
Yeah, okay.
So a half acre, like everything in Madeira Beach should be micro-sized, because everything is micro-sized.
Yes.
Right? So I'm just kind of making some notes here and figuring out what that really means to a particular PD situation, right? So on a, for example, an area, a typical interior lot is about 50 by 100, or 40 by 100. So even if we want the bigger ones, that means we get, you have to have five contiguous lots before we start breaking into the PD. But I know most of the Gulf Boulevard lots that are now commercial zoned, most of those are 40s. A lot of them are 40 by 80. So then we're going to end up with needing about seven lots before we get into a half acre.
Possibly. We also need, in my opinion, to amend our zoning so that it's more flexible and provides for more opportunities for development in keeping with the underlying land use, which provides for a mixed use along there.
I agree. I think we get hamstrung by the letter of the law versus the spirit of the law in a lot of cases with the way our zoning was overlaid and it created a bit of a mess. So I get, my question is, or my opinion would be, that's almost still a little too restrictive to be a half an acre, because if you're talking about the typical Gulf Boulevard lots that we're trying to, I'm feeling like that's where we're headed. What we're trying to do is get more mixed use, live-work type stuff along the Gulf Boulevard corridor, which would probably bleed south from Johns Pass and north from the town center and work its way across the Boulevard. But I own some of those, and I'm not saying this from a self-serving thing, because I have no intention to move, but I have two lots where my commercial property is, and they're each 40 by 80. So in order to assemble something where you could do a PD, I've got to have seven lots contiguous. And in my particular case, it wouldn't be that bad in my area, because I have residential behind me, so you could probably incorporate some of that. But I know as you go south, you then have some of the lanes that cut through, and that would then make those not contiguous.
No, lanes, roadways do not.
Yeah, so you would literally have to have at least seven Gulf Boulevard fronting lots to be able to do something with a PD.
No, what I'm saying is that roads do not separate a PD.
Oh, they don't?
They don't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, my apologies. Okay. Perfect, that's better. You know, my opinion would be half acre is still a little bit restrictive, but just going in the right direction.
I have a question. With the amendment votes tomorrow, whichever way that goes, what effect would this have on...
This would just be...
Clarification or...
Well, this would be a specific standard. For instance, whatever planned development came in, if it passes tomorrow and you need a supermajority to pass it, it would still have to meet these criteria as well.
Okay. Whether it passes or not, this is kind of simplifying this for people to understand.
Yes, it does, it does add in more restriction on what kind of PDs people bring in, and with the intent of showing that we want it to be substantial. You know, I mean, it's a PD. Typically, you're, you would, you could change your own zoning within a land use category without having a PD, or you could, you could be able to bring in a development that say you only had two or three lots contiguous, you didn't, you shouldn't need a PD to develop them.
I'm with you, yeah, I see what you're saying.
You should have some basic rights to build something.
I'm with you, okay.
You know, right now, it's very restrictive. We've got some zonings that say you can only be two stories high, but you can get up to 60 units on the lot. Obviously, that's impossible. You know, it can't be done. So if we're going to say that a certain density is allowed, then we ought to, by right, allow people to come in and say, for instance, you know, you have the right to three stories over parking. If you also include, you do this and this, you can get a fourth. If you do this and this, you can get a fifth, and that's as high as we want to go. But, you know, you end up with five stories as long as you put in some extra, without having to go through a PD.
I see, okay.
It's just a performance standard. That would be the direction I'm hoping to take the code and bring something back to you that reads that way, because we should not have to do this PD every time.
So this simplifies it and makes it more uniform for the city?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm with you, thank you.
My question would be, how does FEMA deal with, you say, retail on the bottom?
Right, it's a very good question.
If you have to go up so high, how does that get in?
Currently, currently, non-residential properties in the A-zone are allowed to enclose and put things on the floor, the ground, they just need to be waterproofed. So there's different construction standards you have to use. With the new maps and the implementation of the coastal A designation, there are some A areas that will have to be developed with V restrictions, which will not allow any retail or any other opportunity, growth on the, on the ground. That is going to be a significant problem for us. It'll be crippling for places like Treasure Island. Treasure Island's entire downtown is in coastal A. They would not be allowed to have any retail there if anything happens. And they can't make any changes beyond a 50% value to improve it. So it's, it can be, it could significantly alter the way small coastal towns are developed. I had the extensive conversation about this with the FEMA rep on Friday, where he says, "Well, you know, they'll just have to put the retail upstairs." And I said, "That does not work. It never works." And they said, "Oh, it'll be okay." I said, "Oh, quit talking like a FEMA person and listen to me here. From a planning standpoint, we've just spent 40 years trying to change the regulations that took retail off the street, because it doesn't work anywhere else, and the towns don't work that way." You know, we know now that in order for retail to work, it has to be visible and accessible from the ground. So this will have a big impact on some areas. There are portions of Gulf Boulevard more towards the south, where both sides of the road are in coastal A, and will not be able to be rebuilt with, with ground-level retail or mixed use.
Will they be able to be insured?
If, as long as they rebuild to meet standards and don't put anything on the ground.
If the retail is ground level?
If it's already ground level.
That could flood the whole store.
Right. If the retail is ground level, they can still get insurance, but just like with residential insurance, all of those premiums are going up. Right? Now, we have not yet implemented coastal A here. We want to wait and make sure that the maps are correct before we start restricting people. However, in, we've just begun discussing any kind of work we needed to do on city buildings, and we're going to adhere to the coastal A-zone restrictions for public properties. And then, well, at least that's what I'm recommending. And we have, when meeting with residential clients or, or commercial clients, we're telling everybody, this is what's coming, and proceed at your own risk. If you want to build on the ground right now, or if you want to build a house under current elevation requirements, you can do so until we change the maps. But be aware that once the maps are changed, your home would be non-conforming, and potentially that would have some insurance impact on you.
So what about the structures that have been on the island for so many years? What's, what's the outcome for those people?
Well, the outcome for structures that have been here for years is the same, basically, that it is now. Insurance premium's going to continue to rise until they reach market level. And so it will become more and more expensive to insure things that are on the ground, are not above the base flood elevation. For, we don't know what the implications are going to be for projects that are what we call post-firm, that are above flood elevations, because up until now, they have had a significant reduction. I know some people only paying $300, $400 a year for flood insurance because their houses were built... houses were built above the BFE. If they're in a coastal, however, now, and they have enclosed garages, those will become non-conforming. So, because we would have to implement the V-zone standards. Now, you could, you can build walls, but they'd have to be breakaway, and breakaway walls have to have seams, so that there's space between them. Also, another thing that's critical is that in a V-zone, instead of measuring the base flood elevation or from the top of the living floor, you, you have to measure it from the lowest horizontal member. And so, we're going to lose another foot of development. So, places who have just met the design flood elevation based on the top floor are now going to be non-conforming. Most cases, I will tell you that in recent years, most people come in with their house, and it's a little bit above even what's required. You know, we ask for two feet of freeboard, and most people actually come in closer to three freeboard, hardly anybody's right at that level. So, hopefully, those homes would still be conforming after the change, but I, I really can't guarantee anything. In some cases, two people's elevations have changed. There are more V-zones than there used to be, and in some places, the flood elevation went up, and other places, it went down. There's, there are a lot of changes.
Linda, where are most of these floodplain A located in Madeira Beach?
Well, everything that's not on the beach. The B is almost entirely along the beach. Everything else is in A, not the coastal A. We could show you the map. Do you know where my maps are? You know where my maps are?
So?
We can show you the map tonight.
Coastal A is on the beach?
No.
No.
No, 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 the V-zone is on the beach. Well, yes, coastal, the coastal A goes beyond the V-zone along the beach a little ways. Actually, it doesn't have much effect on the beach properties, because the sand dunes prevent the, the low, what coastal A is, it's a new zone that they're designated, are areas that are subject to low to moderate wave run-up of up to a foot and a half wave. So, we've got all of these places that are sitting right on the water that used to be A-zone, but realistically, if a good storm came through, you know water's going to come up over those seawalls, and some places are going to be subject to some wave run-up. Well, a, a foot and a half of wave run-up can take your walls out. And I know, we, we haven't really got that here, we haven't had it here, but, you know, this is insurance. It's about risk. So, they're just assessing that risk or wave run-up is obviously higher on places that are right on water. We've got an awful lot of that here. The, the coastal A comes in, for instance, it takes in all of 150th on both sides. All the way down to Madeira Way, and then it also takes in all of the area we're in now. This is all coastal A now, all the city plaza. But I could show you in detail, thank you, after the meeting, and we can look for your properties.
Yeah.
But doesn't it say?
Pretty much where it was after.
I know. Didn't it say that Madeira Beach is A?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, the whole of Madeira Beach is in the floodplain, so you're either A or V anyway.
We, we've been there.
Yes, you always have been. But the coastal A is different, because the coastal A goes in further than A, and it means a lot of things that used to be A will now be treated as if they are V. That's what it does with the, basically.
Okay, so we can stay after and look at that?
Yes.
Okay. May I, is there any more discussion among members of the Planning Commission? Could I, could one member please make a motion to approve letter D in regard to purpose of planned development districts with the amendment including on, Linda, if you would like to repeat that per se, could we add your amendment that we didn't have written, so this would be done?
Yes, I would suggest that it be mixed use.
Okay.
Where allowed by zoning.
Amending, adding a mixed-use development?
That it would be required to be mixed use.
Yes, but I'd say where, where allowed. By, well, where it's allowed by land use policy.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the Code of Ordnances, Division 10, PD Plan Development, section 110 dash 386. The purpose of the planned development district, establishing a minimum site area and performance standard, to include the amendment that all new PD would be mixed use where allowed by zoning.
Thank you. Is there a second?
But where does that put in the vote tomorrow?
It, it has no.
So, that would have nothing to do with it?
No, whether the vote passes or not tomorrow will only be a matter of whether PDs have to be approved by three votes or by four by the Commission. That's the only impact it will have. This would be approved, if they approved this, this would be put in place whether the charter amendment passes or not.
Okay. Could we have a second, and then we can have more discussion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any more discussion among the Planning Commission members? Okay, I'd like to open the floor for anyone here who wishes to speak to this issue from the audience. Okay, the public hearing is closed, since no one is in attendance. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Glenn?
Okay. Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyat?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
And First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. I think some very good housekeeping items that will prove to be very beneficial. That's good. Okay, on to Roman numeral five, old business. Do we have any old business to report?
No, we don't.
No.
Okay. In regard to six, anything else anyone would like to bring up?
It's up to the board members if any of them have anything.
Okay. Our next meeting, according to our agenda, will be December 10th. Do we already have items on the agenda?
No, we don't have any items as of yet, do we, Linda?
No, not, not at this time. If they were simple, there, there's still time before the cutoff, it's always possible that something will come in. We have some planned developments that are being proposed, but they still have to go through their neighborhood workshop before they end up on your agenda. And I will not be bringing the land development code back in yet, because we have that CRS to prepare for.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other, anybody would like to say? Okay, I just hope everyone has a very blessed holiday, Thanksgiving's a time for us to appreciate all our good favors. Okay, meeting is adjourned.